Welcome to our March 11 Fort Mill Town Council meeting. Please, if you have a cellphone, an iPad, or something that might ring or disturb us as we are working to communicate and pay attention to your issues, if you would please silence that so that we can do the best job possible to ensure that we hear you clearly. We have conducted an open forum from 5:30 until 6 o'clock where we've had question and answer, open to the public, kind of free form, very beneficial. We'll be doing that four times a year, the last evening meeting of every quarter in this location. If you would, we will rise to say the pledge of allegiance and then Mr. Huntley will give us our invitation. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we give thanks for the blessings you have bestowed upon us, the blessings of family, community, state, and nation. We pray that as we gather together to consider the problems facing our community that you would grant us wisdom to do what is right. These things we pray in our holy name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Council members, you have received the minutes from our February 25th and our March 2nd workshop. Do I have any changes, deletions, or additions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion, we accept.
Second.
You have a motion in three seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Public comment, pursuant to section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting. Do we have a sheet?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start with Al Rogat. Al, if you'll come forward and give your name and street address, that'd be great.
Hi, I'm Al Rogat, 1006 Crest Haven Lane. As we all know, been in the newspaper, been discussed in council many times, we have serious traffic issues on 160 in the Kingsley Development area. And for that reason, like to register my opposition to any approvals for a hospital on the corner of 160 and 21. That is no place to put a hospital, all the additional traffic that'll cause and all the need that they have, that people coming and going, on top of what is already a disaster, as we all know and agree. It's not a place for a hospital. The town needs a hospital or two, that's just not the place for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Donald Ward, Donald, if you'll come forward, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Donald Ward, I live at 1430 Dobie's Bridge Road, and I'm here about the rezoning of the property. The property used to be old family home place, and the land and stuff there is considered, two-thirds of it's considered a wetland. And there is also some quicksand on it because we had a cow to get stuck in it one time when we was little. But I am against the thing being zoned commercial because there's a lot of animals that live in there, wildlife, and all, and then plus the lay of the soil and all, it's not suitable for no commercial property. And with me owning the Walnut Lane Apartments, all the tenants back there are very concerned about the noise and stuff that would be coming from, they said it's enough coming from the store, but the store's grandfathered in, and all, it's still residential, and all. So I'm just totally against the zoning, and I've got right here 16 names of people that live on Walnut Lane that are against the zoning of the property.
Does everybody understand on council property that Mr. Ward is speaking about? This is the property on Dobie's, just past the Fairway Fuel, okay?
Just past what?
Fairway Fuel on Fairway Drive.
Oh, okay.
It's on the left, it served as a church property most recently.
You're against that?
I'm against it.
He's against changing the zoning to commercial?
Like I said, I've got 16 names, if you want to petition.
We'll be glad to hold it for you. Do you mind giving it up?
I give it up.
You want to route it from council member to council member, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Okay, we have no further residents scheduled on our public comment sheet. There are no presentations at this evening's meeting. Old business items. Old business item number one, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 2, Mayor and Council, Division 1, Generally, Section 2-26, salaries, so as to provide for the reimbursement of expenses incurred in the performance of official duties and to provide for compensation in association with participation in town health insurance and the state retirement system. Davey Breen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, good evening. Yes, this ordinance are changing the...
I think we need to do a motion.
I have to bring it into the table first, sorry. Make a motion to accept old business item number one.
Second. Thank you, Dave, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Again, this is a approval of this ordinance would allow council members to participate in our town health insurance and state retirement system, and we've changed the wording to correlate with state regulations, so.
Questions from council?
This does not go into effect immediately, correct?
Absolutely, it goes in, if approved, it would go into effect January of 2020.
Further questions?
I've been participating in the retirement system for several years, and what would, and I'm still doing it, what would the effect that we're participating, what would that be? You'd reimburse me, or what?
No, sir, you would stay in the retirement system. What this would also allows, if you wanted to take part in the town health system.
Okay.
And one of the things is that we needed to clean up the paperwork side of it, so that what you were doing was consistent with what we're, we can all do, and that it marries up with other municipalities and the way that they address it.
I know to retire, your age and the year of service got to add up to a certain number, and that I've been in a couple of years, I looked into it, and that wasn't happening, and the reason was I saw her was so small, it did not count as a year. It counted as a third of a year, and I was going to have to be 138 before I could draw retirement.
And then you'll draw $53.43.
It took five years from now.
They're starting early, don't they, Larry? All right, any further questions on old business item number one? We have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Old business item number two, second reading, a series ordinance approving the financing of the construction and equipping of certain improvements to sewer facilities of the Town of Fort Mill through the borrowing of not exceeding $35 million plus capitalized interest, if any, from the State Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund by agreement with the South Carolina Water Quality Revolving Fund Authority pursuant to Title 48, Chapter 5, Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, providing for the agreement to make and to accept a loan, the execution and delivery of a loan agreement between the Town of Fort Mill and the South Carolina Water Quality Revolving Fund Authority, the execution and delivery of a promissory note from the Town of Fort Mill to the South Carolina Water Quality Revolving Fund Authority, and other matters relating thereto. Our expert is Shontae Bowler, I need a motion.
Make a motion to accept, old business item number two.
I have a motion and a second. Hi, Shontae.
Hello, Mayor, members of council, and I'm sure you're ready for us to latest rest, so you don't have to read that long background anymore.
It's just generous.
Tonight, we do come to you regarding the SRF loan, and I'd like to talk about both of them together because together they make up the funding method for the two projects that we are wanting to undertake, and that's to move on to Phase 2 of the waste treatment plan upgrade and for the meters project that we anticipate. The SRF loan agreement ordinance, it was necessary to do some tweaking, some restructuring of some of the debt contained within that ordinance, that we had to have some language upgraded in it. As a result of that restructuring, the town stands to benefit from a cost savings of about $975,000. So we thought that was a good restructuring.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Tell me that again.
$975,000 is what that will result in.
Thank you.
And so, having said that, we are asking for approval of the second reading for the SRF loan.
It's amazing work. This is not easy work that you guys do to ensure that the funding is not just secured, but that it's right and best serves our community, so thank you for that hard work.
Any questions for Shontae?
Shontae, this is probably the biggest project in the history of the town, if not one of the biggest.
That, since I've been here, yes.
So, good job staff on security funding.
Absolutely.
Watching those coverage ratios.
Yes, sir, we got to do that.
Okay, hearing no further comments, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you, Shontae. Old business item number three, and I believe this will remain with you, second reading, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale waterworks and sewer system improvement revenue bonds of the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, to be designated Series 2019B and other matters relating thereto. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept, old business item number three.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay.
Again, this is the second piece of the funding model, so we are asking for approval of second reading tonight. Once this is done, according to our calendar, we are looking to close on this structure on April the 11th.
Okay. Any questions on the second portion of this item for Shontae? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. New business items. New business item number one, first reading and public hearing, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the Town of Fort Mill so as to change the zoning designation for York County tax map numbers 020, 11, 01, 111, the same beginning, and 110, a portion, containing two plus or minus acres located at 1462 and 1466 North Dobie's Bridge Road from R15 Residential to TC Transitional Commercial. Ward 4, this is Mr. Moody, Chris Pettit is our resident expert, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept, new business item number one.
I guess we better do the public hearing first, and then we'll do the motion, fair enough?
We'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone with comment, additional comment?
Um...
Yes, ma'am?
Um...
Would you come to the podium, please, ma'am? Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Can't hear you very well, I'm getting a little age on these ears, too many concerts.
I apologize, I don't understand the process as much as I should, so I'm not prepared, but just in light of Mr. Ward's comments and whatever is being considered here on, I had represented the current owner of the property, and when he purchased the property, it was being used as, I suppose, church offices. It had been used as daycare facilities for many, many years. I've had people tell me they thought other types of businesses may have been there over the years. But my client's position is that when he purchased the property, he felt that he could continue to use the building as it was retrofitted and renovated, and it is set up as two sides of the, each side of the building, separate entrances and so forth, separate facilities for two different businesses, actually, or as one entity for one business. It has ample parking, they've met the landscaping boundary requirements, all of those detailed things that had already been looked into, he purchased it this way, and in finding that he cannot even rent it as a duplex to families, nor as to businesses because of the zoning, he is caught now with the building he doesn't know what to do with. It would be terribly expensive to return it to a fitting, the renovations that would be required to make it a proper single family, it has two huge kitchens, two handicap bathrooms, and so on and so forth, and just the way the floor plan is set up, it's not suitable for, to just use a single family. He had been advised that if the concrete building next to it, on the one parcel, and the white house next to it, on the front of that parcel, were connected as a two-acre parcel for the rezoning to commercial highway or transitional commercial, whichever council and town would approve, he would be happy with that because he could find many uses and be able to continue with what his first intentions were, and leave the remaining five acres as residential, which, what I'm learning from Mr. Ward, you know, which I had not considered before, you know, it is, a lot of it is wetland, there are residents back there, I can understand how that would be a concern, to have potential commercial there, but that was never the intention. So I suppose I'm making comments and asking questions at the same time, but in the event that the front parcels, front two acres with the two buildings that front Dobie's Bridge Road could be zoned separately, or however it is required to be for commercial, if that were done, then would that put it in better standing to be considered for the rezoning and leave the back acres as residential?
How do you represent him? Are you his lawyer, are you his real estate agent?
I was his real estate agent, technically still am, but I was his representative on this purchase several months ago.
Well, very fortunately, we have a, it's one of the times I can honestly say we do have a good process by which when someone wants to purchase a piece of property, they can determine the zoning, and they can talk with our planning director and the town staff and see what is possible. In those possibilities, you would be able to go before the planning commission and the zoning board before it ever gets to us. So once it gets to us, it's already been through two entities to look at it, and our staff as well. So when it eventually comes to us, as it has, you know, by that point in time, you know, there certainly, if it's turned down, you can go back through the process again. If it's accepted, you know, so be it. But we do have to rely upon the people that sit on those councils and boards and do that to present us with what their recommendations are. So changes are possible in zonings, but they have to go through the process, and the process is not before us. It comes in a lengthy period of time up to us. So when we sell a piece of property, I'm a real estate agent, when we sell a piece of property, we have to be cognizant of what that zoning designation is and what's possible within that. So that's...
And the uses that you cited are all allowed to go into any zoning area. We can put a daycare anywhere in the town, we can put a church anywhere in the town, so because those two functions were happening on that piece of property, that still doesn't open the window for a different business to be operated in that property.
Right.
Okay?
Well, yes, I understand that, and he does as well. And there, obviously, you know, I didn't follow with him in all of the steps he took during the purchase and since the purchase, but I know that he has spoke to multitudes of people in different offices, and I believe that he felt he had taken the proper steps, and that suddenly, you know, it's at this point, and it doesn't, it didn't make sense to me, but he is out of town, and I told him that I would come and listen, not intending really to say anything, but just to listen, but, but, but I know that the thought was also given to him that there were also uses that could be grandfathered in, which are not possible now, with it being set up as a duplex, not truly suitable for living, but for offices, and just some things, it's just, and the fact that it was not appropriate for commercial because it sat in, among residential. However, it does, but it doesn't, there is also other commercial surrounding, you know, the gas station next door, which I understand is zoned residential, but it's never going to be used as residential. If it were available as residential, nobody'd build a home there, I'm sure. And, you know, there's a scrap metal place next to that, there are a couple of homes, but then there's transitional commercial on the corner, just several, two parcels down. Goddard School is building, you know, a few more parcels down, of course, you know, and it gets busier and busier along to the Parkway. But I will, I appreciate, you know, your hearing that much, because I'm sure it will come back around, hopefully with right process at that point in time, but it sounds like he just needs to start over.
I think we need to clear up, grandfathered does not set a business in perpetuity.
No, it does not.
Once you are operating a business, and you then close the business and try to find someone to operate it after the fact, if that, if that business does not operate again, and I'll use the gas station as an example, if they close and do not find somebody to buy it and operate it as it is being operated, I forget, what is it, 12, 12 months? If it sits dormant for 12 months, then they lose their grandfather status.
That's correct.
Okay? So if your building is sat, if it was used as an office, and then it sat for a year not being used for anything, then it loses that grandfather status. That does not, and I, because I've heard the gentleman say that also, that does not stay in perpetuity, you don't get to keep that forever, okay?
And I believe the conversation probably started at one point, but then that period of time would have expired by the time it actually changed.
Well, and I think to a church office is different than a business office. The allowances that are provided to us are different to engage in the two different types of use. So I think to take it from a church office, which is allowed, to a business office requires a zoning change. And that has to go before the planning commission, the staff, and the zoning, so...
Right.
And it applies to everyone, and what Councilman Sherry has described is accurate, that, you know, it's, it's to try to make sure we treat everybody the same, and do it exactly the same.
Of course.
Thank you.
Of course.
We appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
We have a, first, we will now close, anybody else have anything to say on this particular issue?
Hearing none, we're closing the public hearing. Now I will entertain a motion on the first reading.
Make a motion to accept, new business item number one.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And by the motion to accept, then we are agreeing to amend the zoning map, to change the zoning designation from R15 Residential to TC Transitional Commercial.
Mm-hmm.
I have a motion to accept that and a second. Any further discussion?
So, Chris, can you provide for us, it's got you as resident expert on this, what TC or transitional commercial kind of entails?
Yes, as soon as I can find my mouse here. The TC Transitional Commercial District, the intent of that district is to, for lack of a better term, provide that transition between solely residential areas and solely commercial areas. And so the purpose of the district is to allow some less intensive commercial uses and service uses, banks, barber shops, daycares, drugstores, et cetera, and to allow those uses, but to limit them, to cap their square footage allowance, so that on a particular piece of property, a building cannot be built larger than, I believe it's 75, 100 square feet. So again, the idea with the district was to be that transition, that midpoint between solely residential areas and highway to commercial or local commercial areas.
And that designation is made it into the UDO?
This is a designation in the existing zoning ordinance, we don't, we maybe have one property that is zoned transitional commercial in the town today.
But when the UDO goes in, we will, this will be...
This is not a district that has been proposed to move forward.
Is there...
Play a commitment.
Sorry. Is there a limit to the number of cars estimated for that? So you talked about square footage of a facility.
The way that the district was designed to limit the intensity was through just the limit of the square footage allowance of a particular structure on a lot. So it's not necessarily X number of trips per day from a traffic standpoint, but it was just designed by capping square footage.
Chris, you got a question?
So, what the planning commission, I see they denied this question?
They nabbed it.
The planning commission did, at their February 19th meeting, recommend in favor of denial of the rezoning.
Why, just, why was that?
The request was, the property is designated in our comprehensive plan as medium density residential, so the request is not in compliance with that comprehensive plan designation. And additionally, whereas the intent maybe of the applicant is to utilize the existing buildings as office that were previously used as church offices, when looking at a rezoning request, they look at the property, kind of forgetting the existing uses, and what would be allowed by right in that zoning district. And so for the particular property, a 7,500 square foot building with a variety of uses would be permitted by right if the property were to be rezoned, and it was the planning commission's feeling that that was, the intensity of that was not appropriate for that area.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to make that even more simple, because that is the issue for me. It's not necessarily the plan to use the current dual office that was used by the church's office space, that seems innocent enough. It's when you make the wholesale change of the zoning, what it allows to occur on the property that would trouble me. I do live out that way, I don't hide that, and we have blessedly seen a reduction in traffic on Dobie's once the bypass is opened. We anticipate the type of commercial growth on the bypass, that's expected, but I'm not necessarily in support of an open designation that could become something entirely different.
Yeah.
Do we have an estimate of the current square footage of the facility?
I do not, off the top of my head.
The current home?
Yes.
No, it's what, 20...
1600.
32.
Yeah, because it was duplex.
Yeah.
It was a duplex. 1600 on both sides.
The building itself, the duplex?
Mm-hmm.
Is, I believe it's 21, but 2,043 square feet.
Do we have a designation smaller than transitional commercial that would allow for an office to be used?
We do not have a less intensive commercial designation that would meet the applicant's requested or intended use as far as professional office. This is our least intensive commercial district.
Any further questions? Comments? We have a motion on the table to approve the request for zoning change and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Nay. Thank you. All right, new business item number two, first reading and public hearing, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the Town of Fort Mill so as to change the zoning designation for York County, didn't I just read that? York County tax map number 0200606010009008007006005002 and 012, containing approximately 3.27 plus or minus acres from R15 Residential to LC Local Commercial. This is Ward 2, Mr. Helms, and our resident expert is Chris Pettit. We will open the public hearing on this particular item now.
Madam Mayor, the applicant has withdrawn his application for the rezoning.
All righty then. We will take that out of, no, don't need to do anything, thank you, that's, we'll make sure.
That's, we'll make sure. All right, we will now move to new business item number three, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, York County C-Fund Proposed Projects. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept new business item number three.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Brian Harris. Hi, Brian. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Mayor and members of council, um, it's that time of year, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty C-Fund project request from York County. We as a town staff have ranked from the most important to least important five streets here in, um, Fort Mill that we feel, um, need to be resurfaced. And, um, the submittal date is March the fifteenth, so, um, if there are any changes or any streets that you would like added, if you could let us know, and we'll get those added, so we can submit these rolls before Mo- before or on March fifteenth.
I hate asking you to do it, but I'm an old woman, and I can't see it, and this thing won't participate tonight.
Okay.
Can you read the street names off to me, please, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Um, most important, number one is Steel Street.
Okay.
From Ralph Bunch to Springfield Parkway.
Okay.
Um, number two is North White Street.
Okay.
From Horse Road to McCannon.
Mm-hmm.
Number three is South White Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to Sprat Street.
Okay.
Um, number four, McEacham Street to Williams Street.
Okay.
It's, I think that's the U.
Mm-hmm.
Right there.
I think you're right.
Yes, ma'am. And then number five, McGee Street.
Mm-hmm.
From McGee to Steel Street.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Harris?
Yeah, kind of clarification, um, when we look at C-funds, do we have any kind of estimate of how much funding we think we might receive for these projects this year?
And I can tell you from the RFAT's position that it's not likely we're going to get a lot of anything. Some of the C-funds, uh, were used for various and sundry other projects, and some of that money is being, I believe, shifted to help with some of the issues on one sixty, eliminating left-hand turns, uh, reprogramming lights, the, they're doing some shifting to try to address the larger artery problems that we have, and the C-funds will repopulate with, with money, they'll refund, but, um, I, I don't think we'll get a whole lot.
And the decision to, uh, which roads or which projects get picked by C-funds?
It's purely based on what the community, municipality provides, um, and, and we've had success before. We, we've seen some pavings that were needed, um, but I just think this is going to be an interesting year with the interchanges on seventy-seven, the one sixty, the twenty-one quarter. There's some really large projects, and then the bypass from Sprat up to the bridge at US Foods is just rapidly rising on the import list. So, um, I just don't see us getting a whole lot of C-funds. I just don't.
That being said, though, I still think this is a good list.
Oh, absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Yes, goodness.
Do we know what our ratings are on those roads, as they stand? A traffic count rating, or, no, are we like in orange, or?
I'm not sure about that. Um, I do have some good news, though. Um, Harris put in some, uh, put in some work in advance, uh, studying these streets and to, to put together this list, and I noticed as of Friday, or Saturday, when I noticed it, uh, the state has come in and did some white lines marking on White Street, which is our number two street. It looks like they're going to repair the issues, or the areas along, from Horse Road to downtown, so...
You got one big dip.
Right. So, um, I'm not sure of the timing on that, I haven't gotten an answer from the state yet, but it appears that they're going to do some resurfacing to that road. Maybe not in the entire stretch of it, but, um, just fix certain portions of that road, which would...
They did mention that we might start seeing some, not just filling of potholes, but some larger patching. Always pretty to see, too, right?
I don't think that our staff is just that good.
This happens before you bring it to us, right?
Yeah.
When you, uh, when you look at that, that, I think that's the direction that the state, and we may be moving in, in that same direction in the future. Instead of resurfacing, resurfacing an entire road is just addressing the, the needed areas. It's the cost of asphalting roads is astronomical, and it's, you have to look at the overall road and determine, way is it better to just fix certain portions or start from scratch and resurface all of it, so...
Sort of like that area at my back door where the carpet needs replacing, I don't want a patchwork, you know? So, it just depends.
Right. Got up here on Sprat Street, where they just repaved it, what, two years ago?
Mm.
And it's already coming apart.
It's terrible.
Yes, sir, and that's, uh, you're absolutely right, and that was recently, um, resurfaced in C-Fund, through the C-Fund project, um, and that's when you do a complete overlay of a, of a road, if you don't make repairs to the needed portions, then they're going to come back, they'll reappear over time. And unfortunately, these reappeared in a short period of time, so we'll work with the state to try to address those immediate issues.
Any further questions for Mr. Harris?
And the rain has not been our friend when it comes to raining.
No, it is not.
It is not.
And Mayor, and if, if, I would make a suggestion also, um, if we're going to, if we're going to add a street to this, since White Street may be, may have some work done to that, I would suggest Tom Hall.
Oh, yeah.
Um, because I'm, but just because of the recent weather conditions, I've noticed that there are portions of it that are starting to, um, deteriorate, so we may want to add that to the list if y'all are, y'all are okay with that.
You know I complain about that puddling all the time.
Right.
Because with all the rain we've had, it's like being at the beach.
So the piece you're talking about is down towards what used to be the Chinese restaurant, or?
I think it actually begins right at Main Street.
I agree.
And then goes all the way through Bank Street.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, no further questions from Mr. Harris? Excellent work, we have a motion, uh, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Uh, there are no information discussion items for this evening, uh, for the good of the order, there's no executive session items, so Larry, for the good of the order?
I'd like to bring up one thing about Nation Ford High School. My oldest grandson go there, and he participates in the symphonic choir next month. They will be participating at Carnegie Hall in New York.
Wow. That's amazing.
Be the first hunk that ever got famous.
No, this is the second one. You're the first one. Uh, well, thank you, that's interesting, we wish him well.
Thank you.
It is neat. I, I'm good, thank you.
Lisa?
Um, coming to tag team, and what we were talking about a little bit in the public, um, open forum session, this weekend, my daughter participated in travel soccer at Manchester and Rock Hill, and while, you know, yeah, soccer's fun, and it poured down rain, it was really cold, um, one of the neat things, and why it affects Fort Mill, is to see at two or three o'clock in the afternoon, when you would think a slow time, the number of people coming into Fort Mill from those games that were sitting at Impeccable, uh, Impeccable Pig.
Improper.
Proper Pig, sorry. Sorry. To me, Pig.
Keep trying to give them a new reputation.
I know, exactly. It's good barbecue, trust me. Um, but anyway, yeah, the amount of people that that brings into our town, even though, you know, it's not necessarily a town-sponsored event, we are getting quite a bit of tourism off of those various events going on in the area, so welcome to our visitors that come, and thank you to those that came for public session, and also, you know, to express your concerns. Um, that's one of the ways that we find out what you guys are feeling and how to make a difference.
Absolutely. Trudy?
Well, it was mentioned earlier about the rain that we've had, and, um, the complaints, well, we, we've all been complaining about the rain, myself included, um, but if you look back, there were days that, um, if the temperature was one degree or two degrees lower, we would have had this much snow, just like they, they were out west and in the north. So I don't know which will be worse, the rain or the snow. At least you don't have to shovel rain off your sidewalk.
That's right. Chris?
So you mentioned the almanac earlier.
Yes.
I'd like to share a story. Um, my grandfather was a farmer, um, he's passed away about fifteen years ago, but he was, um, a young farmer came to him and said, "Mr. Moody, uh, I'm getting ready to plant my corn." And he, and they used the almanac, he said, "Well, you, you can't plant your corn because the moon isn't right." My grandfather did, he looked at the almanac, he looked at the phase of the moon, he said, "Mr. Moody, I don't know where you're planting your corn, but I'm planting mine here on planet Earth." So, um, my grandfather always told that story and laughed, the young farmer kind of got, got one up on him, but abolish the time change, it's been a rough transition for my little ones, so, uh, that could be all of our platform, right, Ms. Harris?
I hear that.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Levity's good. Ronnie?
Uh, I want to commend Chipper on a well program, well-done program, uh, Saturday night, and all the firemen that received the awards and accommodations, uh, it was well-done. Very nice.
And I'll second that, Ronnie. Very nice.
Um, yeah, I'd like to address that as well. Our fire department, I, I just don't know how to say thank you enough, I missed this because I was in Columbia, um, and could not be here, and it's one of my favorite events, when we talk about the really good work that's done with those that sacrifice, um, everything to protect us. Uh, I had the pleasure of listening to a voicemail that was delivered to our police department this week, uh, about one of our policemen that had stopped someone, and they felt compelled to call and say that even though they were stopped for speeding, they wanted to let us know how well they were treated by our police and staff. They were treated respectfully and kindly, and that means the world to me, to know that the staff we have goes above and beyond to provide the level of service that we all should appreciate. We all should be very grateful for that. I'd like to thank staff for the multitude of times that we go round and round to try to help people to do the things they'd like to do with their property, but keep it in an orderly fashion so that we can support the comprehensive plan and the overall growth of our community in a way that keeps it what it is. Thank, thanks to each of you for coming and being respectful in your comments today. Um, we had really decent conversations, which I think is missing in most of America today, um, and it feels good to be able to talk to our community one-on-one, and we try to do that with every step of the way. Thank you to staff and, uh, council for your efforts. We spent a lot of time last week, and then on Saturday, guys, you, we don't just show up here on Monday evenings once a month, we do a lot of work to study and research and discuss what can we do that will be good for the community, what's the best path, and, and what's the right path? And there's so many things we'd like to do, but not everything's possible. But, um, the effort, um, that my teammates, uh, both on the administrative staff and here on this council, thank you for leaving your families on a weekend day, and on the weeknights, and Davy and your staff, and always Virginia. Can't do anything without Virginia, nothing.
This town would shut down without Virginia.
Yeah. Um, lastly, I, I know it's a knit for me, but with all the rain, I don't know if it's just knocking down all the leaves and things, but I hate seeing so much trash. What's wrong with you people throwing trash out on our streets? I don't understand it. I do not. And Al, you mentioned people washing mud down the drains? Mud's the least of our worries. And when you look at the things that are washing into our drains that people carelessly throw out their car window, or do not restrict their trash as they carry it around, it's ridiculous. We have a beautiful community, and we all are responsible for it, so pick up that trash. With that, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
Make that motion?
Second.
A second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay. Thank you for coming.